I approve to approve the minutes that Alan is now reading.
Dan.
A Dan. Alan always sits in that chair. There wasn't much to that meeting as I remember.
Yeah, it was very short.
Next time we meet, it'll be all live. I mean, all bright, like a couple of them. In the light, yeah. No, I didn't see the send it.
Second. I second the motion.
Great. One favor. I am great. Minutes from February 6th have been approved. So I think it makes sense to skip ahead to Agenda Item 3 to talk about the CPA funding meeting recap. So. It went pretty well. I think it actually went better than I expected it to. So. They have the funds without having to bond or.
Right, right.
But they had. Some concerns because they don't want to put in 1.23 million dollars on a structure that doesn't have a set plan. And they want to make sure that we get more allies and more town officials on board before we.
Well, they said more ideas.
So I had a meeting. I, Dan and I both spoke individually to Mary Thayer afterwards.
Yeah.
Via phone call, and she had spoken with Carolyn Brennan and Gary Berg and said that the two of them were not ready to move forward, that we didn't have enough information for them.
I'm sorry, who didn't have enough information? Mary or?
Um, Carolyn and Gary. Yeah.
Why don't they?
Don't know.
Well, certainly. You know, the, it's, it's much better to have some. Documents that are more ready to go out to bid. That's hard to get when you don't have. An architect or OPM to, to get those numbers. So the, the numbers that we submitted were to include the cost.
Right.
Of that particular architect or engineer or project manager, OPM, to develop the accurate costs. So. That being said. You know, they're, they're finding it hard to buy into it because they don't, you know, for some reason, they don't think that, that. All of those, all of those figures put together being the planning and the stabilization efforts, construction. They don't think that all of those can fit into that number.
That number? Well, I think you actually thought that. Because each one of those things was done independently. With. Architectural plans. Already in place for three years ago, that putting them all together, that's what you said would decrease the cost.
Certainly. You know, anytime that you, you know, there's economies of scale, you can, you know, you have one, you make it into one project, you got three different. Activities going on, you roll it into one OPM's scope of work, it's going to save you some money.
Yeah, you said that.
Uh, but that, I mean, that doesn't, saying that doesn't necessarily make the numbers up to date.
Do we need an architectural person's okay before we begin, do you think?
So, uh, yeah, so we'll, we'll get to that. That was a discussion that we had at the Select Board Meeting.
Okay. Well, what I got from the CPA was that seemed like everybody was in favor, however, because the assessment was so low. That. It will trigger in the ADA requirements. Bathrooms, handicap accessible. Elevator and. So I, that's a, that's a. That's a no brainer. I mean, that's a stopper.
Right. Well, we're not looking for occupancy to build it. What we want to do is just stabilize it. So we have.
But I think anything over a certain amount of money. Brings that into play.
Well, that's a, if you, I forget the exact figure, but I think if we, if we spend more than two thirds, the cost of the assessed value, then it requires you to bring.
One third, one third.
Okay, right. One third of the assessed value. And that's not, you know, that's certainly not.
And it's assessed at what, 200,000 or 300,000?
That building is assessed currently at 1.2 million?
Including the land.
Including the land.
Including the land, but what's the building?
Um, let me look it up right now. So the building is 855, 855,000 dollars. And then the land is 536,000.
So one third of 855 is 302. 250.
You know, I would look into that and see if that's actually accurate for. This type of historic restoration effort.
This is, oh.
I'm not, you know, I don't, I don't know the, the ins and outs of that, and I don't know if that statement is accurate, and if that applies to this particular activity. So, you know, I would, I would. I would say we probably have to look into that.
Yeah, I think it might.
If, if, you know, if there's, if there's a way. That we can. You know, do some stabilization efforts on this building. You know, without putting in an elevator, you know, and all that stuff. I mean, it doesn't make, you know, we, we just want to make it so it's, you know, you're able to use it in the future. And somebody, you know, makes it attractive, attractive.
Well, I was worried about the assessment. I thought that was kind of low.
Well, everybody's worried about that in town. You know, the, the town hall isn't assessed for very much money. This. This piece of property is assessed at, at half of what we paid for the two buildings that are on it, which doesn't make any sense.
The two buildings, meaning town hall?
No, the, the library and.
Oh, this, oh, you're talking about.
The library and the senior center are both on the same piece of property, and they both were in excess of what, 7 million? But the whole property is assessed at 7 million. So it doesn't make, that doesn't make any sense. We got to figure out, you know. I'm not, I.
And it just had one building on it. The Hooker School, the Hooker School.
Right. No, this is the current assessment.
Oh, a current.
So I, you know, I don't know how all of that stuff works, and you know, do we have to? Do some investigation into that? Is that, is that a curve ball that somebody's throwing because they're an ASR, don't want to get into fixing up?
But no, he seemed to be impositive. He seemed to be positive about it. Was that Alan? I mean, Dragon?
Hey. So I think.
Dragon, I mean.
So Dan, I think, yes, uh, we. Our responsibility right now or our goal is to stabilize the building. And yes, people need a plan. So if we don't have a plan afterwards.
I didn't say we needed a plan. I was, but I'm wondering about the assessment.
Right. Well, we were talking about occupancy.
Occupancy?
Yeah.
There's no occupancy. There won't be any occupancy.
Correct, and people are concerned about putting money into something that.
Or nothing will have any.
I mean, the ultimate plan, you know. Is for town to retain the, the, the property and the building and get use out of it.
Yeah.
You know. The, the existing.
Well, that's the plan for you, but is that the plan for everybody?
Well, that's, I'm going, I'm going by the survey results. You know, I'm looking at the survey results and saying, this is what the majority of people voted, you know, what, what they, you know. Indicated was their. Preference for the, you know, the, the property and the building. So I'm, you know, I, as a steward of. The townspeople and trying to. Help them get what the majority want. Or would prefer, so that, you know, that's what I'm, you know, that's my focus. So, that being said. I know that the existing town hall is 54 years older than the Russell School. And was originally built as a one-story structure, and in 1909, they added a second story to the existing town hall to expand. To make it, you know, compatible with. You know, and update it for, for a growing town. So in fact, the existing town hall hasn't been expanded. For, you know, increased. You know. Usage by town for over 114 years. Because 114 years ago is the last time we expanded town hall. To, to make, I mean, it's been updated and things, things were done in the 60s and 70s to, to bring it more to modern code, but the elevator in there is not an elevator.
Oh, I'm afraid to go in there.
So, you know, my point is, you know, if we get some use out of this building, it should be done right, and will it cost as much as it did to build this building? Probably. Will it cost more? I doubt it, but that's not for us to state.
This library cost. It wasn't that expensive.
It was, it was around seven.
Seven?
So that's, you know.
Well, that's not best.
The fact that, that parking rack is crammed into that front office in there, they got all kinds of totes full of toys and games and stuff. Yeah, you know, I'd much rather see him on the side of the road that's adjacent to our new playing fields. And I, you know, there's some.
This building.
Yeah, the, the Russell School building has nice big rooms in there. They could do art classes in there. They could do yoga classes in there. They could do a ton of different things in those different rooms.
Right.
And, you know, I, I, I wholeheartedly believe that if we fix the building up and started to get some use out of it, that you'd have more than just parking.
Did Carolyn not have enough information or really appreciate? This building? And the, the. Value of it historically? You talked to her, right?
Uh, I did not talk to her. I didn't, I didn't talk to her one-on-one about this building. You did, right?
I did, and you know, my sense is that she's only one person just like me, and she would like to help the town get what it, you know, go down the proper road for the town, and she's. You know, with no allegiance whatsoever, and she, you know. She's being very fair, and, you know, she has to, she hears mostly from the people she deals with, Select Board, the people and DPW. And, you know. She, she hears mostly from that. She doesn't hear mostly from the town people. So.
I couldn't hear Mary Thayer very well. From the. Zoom meeting, but it sounded like. That she had been talking to Carolyn, and Carolyn wasn't too enamored of going forward. With this, with this project. Is, is that what Mary Thayer said? I couldn't hear her very well.
She, the conversation with Carolyn Brennan happened after this meeting.
Really? Oh, the way she was talking, it sounded like she. She had a lot of misgivings. Be, had to be internal.
I think so. I mean, I, she, she would, I think her point is she would like to see. You know, some more, although we've given her the whole survey that, that town has been asking, you know, the Select Board's asking for, for the whole, now, we want to know what townspeople think, we gave them that. And so, you know, we have that, but what I think she really wants to know is, oh, sure, we're going to put a roof and, and fix up the brickwork. And do some fen- fenstration and some retaining wall work, but what's the next step? What, where do we go from there? She doesn't want to see it sit. CPA doesn't want to see it sit. CPA has awarded money for the Goodwin, old Goodwin building, and that's just sitting.
And, yeah, they've all taken that away by now.
You know, I mean, I. I'm fairly confident that the reason for that going south and not going anywhere is because of COVID. And the Municipal Building Committee did not have meetings for a long time.
That's right.
And we didn't get things going, and people were separated, and.
Yeah.
You know, it was a good thing that we got. Hadley Media hooked up in there when we did, because they were like a lifesaver for this town. To keep people connected. But the project does need to move forward. They have identified dollar amounts, and they do have bid-ready documents.
Well, if it's two years. Or more, it goes away with the CPA.
Right, so they update, they, I think they're gonna, they're gonna.
They're gonna update, but they'll need, they'll need an architect too.
Well, they have one. You know, they, we, we've done a bunch of work on that. I mean, the, the, the specs are skimpy and sparse. But there's enough to go on to get the project started again. And, you know, if, if we don't put money into the Russell School and we delay it even more. The, the, either the cost to renovate it goes sky high.
Yeah.
Or the building sits and deteriorates.
Yeah, it'll have to be torn down.
I, you know. I just want to do, you know. Do what the town is, everybody sick of listening to it, everybody sick of looking at it, when needs to, something needs to happen, and I, I want to make it happen, and. You know, I, I know that CPA, a good amount of CPA people. Are for the project.
Yeah, it seemed like all of them, really.
You know, I'd point out that we have spent. In excess of 350,000 dollars on the cemeteries in Hadley. And, you know, the people who built, the people who built the Russell School are buried in the cemeteries. And I'm sure that if, if they had anything to say about it, they'd say, put money into what we built for the living. You know, pay not attention to my gravestone. You know, I mean.
And to them, Mr. Oakley isn't still.
I did my whole gold work project for Fred. With cemeteries, so.
That was your project?
For Girl Scouts.
I, you know, I think it's a great thing that their, you know, CPA has been spending that money properly. You know, it's a good thing that they did, they put money into the cemeteries and the fencing, and it was a good thing that they, they put money into the, the playing fields and all that. Uh, but in my opinion, we've been saving the CPA money for a long time for a reason. I think this building.
I mean, if you look at Amherst CPA, well, it's zero N and debt, way in debt.
Yeah, I don't want to put our CPA there. If we, if we.
That guy said he didn't want to go into debt, yeah. Guy that had to go to the bathroom.
And it, it just increases our likelihood of, of securing more grants. To fix the building up even more if we spend CPA.
Well, what about just doing one of the things this time, the roof? Is that, have you two have considered that or not?
It was discussed.
Yeah, I mean, I.
Who discussed it?
Uh, was it at CPA or was it at the Select Board meeting?
Not at CPA.
Okay, so this was.
I, I know it was discussed. You know, and, you know, CPA Andy Klapacki did. Did bring up the point and that if you just do one thing, like just do the roof, well, you're just, you're leaving the rest of it. At, at risk, and it's important to.
And your, your idea of using local people to fix it up, I think that's against the law. For a municipal building, it has to go through the proper channels of get, going out to.
Oh, sure. Oh, yeah. I, I'm not saying you could just hire somebody and go out there, but the, the people who put the roof. The people who put the roof on the, on the safety complex are local, and they won the bid, you know, they're a good company. Uh, they put the roof on the, on the, on the Goodwin, I believe.
Well, what do you two think about, or three thing, think about just doing the roof? And sliding out of this right now and then go again next year.
Well, the other thing that one of our Municipal Building Committee members brought up is that, you know, we could save a ton of money by just putting an asphalt roof on it.
I know.
Okay, and if we did that, we certainly would buy about 20 years, and then you could have the 20 years to probably do most of the other work that needs to be done in that building. Before you actually put a real roof on it. So, I mean, that is an avenue. And it's a valid point.
Yeah.
This, this idea comes from a guy I have a lot of respect for, and he's not wrong. Um, you know, should we steer an OPM? Should we secure one in that direction to, you know, just use a temporary roof, just put an asphalt roof on it?
So it doesn't leak, yeah.
Well, so that we can afford to do the brick stabilization and the retainings.
Well, what do you guys think about that?
I don't know, I just feel like it's a Band-Aid.
It is a Band-Aid.
Throwing more money at something that's going to have to be fixed anyway, properly.
Yeah, this building needs.
This building?
This building, you know, the, the roof is under question.
It's asphalt.
And there are questions.
Hold of it two years? Yeah, okay.
I mean, but that's, that's a, that's an industry problem. They've been having problems with, with asphalt shingles for a few years now.
How do you feel, Dragon?
I just, yeah, I kind of feel like. Russell School has come up so many times in the past 20 years in terms of what are we doing with it?
But never put on town meeting floor.
But that, it needs to be its time. You know? And as much as I love the building. And want to see it restored and stabilized. You know, if we're not able to. Get town meeting support or be able to do that with like this go-around, like. I shall grieve. But. I think we need, it needs to be time, and I think everyone's kind of ready for it to be time. For, to either.
To stabilize.
Stabilize or unfortunately move on. You know, the story of Russell School.
Yeah, I mean, it's certainly. It's. You know, in my opinion, it's worthy, you know, after, after touring that building so many times over the past couple of years. And knowing how strong it is, and knowing how there are so many other buildings in this valley that are older. And are of the same type of construction that are still occupied and still in use. It's really silly. Such a handsome piece of architecture, and so visible, so people are really silly and irresponsible to not put the money into it when we are in the perfect position right now. We have.
Well, we're not in a perfect position.
We are, that's the problem. I think we are.
But I'm 110% supporter. But it's like. At what point? Do you keep kind of? Boarding the same. Mission or whatever and, and don't have any. Different results, right?
The reason we don't have the different results is because it's never come up on town meeting floor, on town meeting floor as a singular issue. When CPA money was applied for to fix the roof last, the town quickly dated. Anytime we needed CPA money.
When was that?
It wasn't long ago, it was only a few years back.
But it wasn't done.
It wasn't enough money to do what needed.
Oh, I see.
So.
So it just disappeared.
Well, the, the project never, you know, went out to bid because it, you know, the, the initial estimates were.
So, yeah, well, let me tell you about Amherst Town Hall. When we were restoring that building. It was a big brouhaha about wanting to do, it has a slate roof, and it, but it's pink. And to. Yeah, to find pink she, uh. Enough to restore that roof. Or replace it. Town meeting said no. So it's been patched all these years. It's been patched, and if you look at it, going up Emily, Emily Street, look at it, you can see the patches, and they're ugly. They really are. But at least the. The building doesn't leak. And you wouldn't see this roof as visibly as you do the Amherst Town Hall. So, you know, maybe, maybe. Asphalt roof is the way to go. I don't know. I would hate it, but.
I would see it as, as a. On a means to continue further restoration.
Band-aid as well.
It certainly is an effective Band-Aid for a bunch of years so that you can get the other, more expensive work done, and. Um, there are other avenues, but can the town.
Well, how about patching it? Does it work? I mean, if they do it at Amherst Town Hall?
It's really kind of old to do, I mean, the thing is with.
It's the same age.
Right, but with slate.
It's slate, it's pink slate.
Right, with slate. It will last a long time, but it's, it's the material that it's nailed to that's falling apart, and it's the flashings and other stuff that's deteriorating.
Well, that's all, that was all taken care of, but.
You know, all that, it really needs to be replaced. And, and, you know, whether it's replaced with slate or metal. Or asphalt.
Well, you said metal is the same. Expensive.
I think that'll be roughly the same as, as slate, but I, you know, we don't know without, without getting an OPM. You know, we need that, you know.
Well, do you think that's what we should ask for first then?
So maybe I'll just skip ahead. So Carolyn Brennan connected us to a man named Jake who works for the Architectural Heritage Foundation. Based in Austin, but they're statewide nonprofit. That aims to stabilize and rehab historical buildings. He is willing to give us four to five hours for free to, yeah, to estimate the cost. So Dan and I are meeting with him on Thursday to give him a tour. He's, he'll be hourly after that, but hopefully he'll be able to stay within the five hours, if not, you know, not too much past that. Which I think will be really helpful to have. An actual updated cost for the stabilization.
Well, can he, can he do this estimate?
Yeah, that's what he'll be doing.
He's an architect or what?
Um, he's not an architect, but they specialize in stabilizing structures, so I'm not sure exactly what his degree is in, but. Yeah.
So who's going? Carolyn, you?
And Dan. Yeah. So I think that's going to make CPA happier, it's going to make Select Board happier, and having that information at town meeting, I think will also be. Very good. Essential.
More concrete.
Yes, exactly.
Okay, actually, what you just said, it's not just state, it's a nationwide thing, I think. Heritage Foundation.
The Architectural Heritage Foundation, I believe, it's just Massachusetts, but I bet you there are other Heritage Foundations.
Yeah, because that, that program I listened to about the Spring House. In Springfield. I looked it up, and it wasn't Springfield, Mass. So I don't know. Who knows?
Yeah, this is just Massachusetts, but I'm sure there are others around.
Your meeting on Thursday?
Yes. Um, and I, I also got an estimate for Old Mohawk, we did the 2013 study to update. The feasibility study, and the cost was 8,400 dollars.
How much?
Eighty-four hundred.
I think they're such an incredible resource that. You know, if there's any way that we could. That we could have them. You know, virtually join one of our meetings or something, I don't know.
Yeah, maybe, on Zoom, but who would pay for the 8,400?
Um, so we could apply for CPA funding specifically for that.
In addition to the 100,000 or 1.2 million?
You know, it would be an adjustment to the application. But if this person can do what Old Mohawk can do.
Right.
For free. Then we're going to proceed with that. So we discussed that at the Select Board Meeting, and everyone was. Pretty happy with. With that.
Oh, yeah, anytime you get something for nothing.
Yeah. We should just do that, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
You know, there's been, there's so many people have commented to me about, you know, we can, you. You know, somebody owns, somebody else owns this building, they don't have to pay prevailing wage. And, you know.
I'm sorry, what you said?
If someone else owns that building, they don't have to.
That's right.
So there's been a lot, a lot of that comment comes from a lot of different people, and. You know, it, I would love to say that, that, you know. There's a group of people in town who'll be willing to form a 501(c)(3). And, and. You know, go at. Collecting money to, you know, to, to fix the building up. In fact. Hadley Historical, I went through their. Articles of organization. And they're 100% eligible, and, and, you know, they, they can certainly collect money. To be used on that building. Would the town sell that building to the Hadley Historic Society? For a dollar and let them apply for the CPA money and let them do the fundraising? The, the town of Hadley probably would. But I don't know that the Historic Society wants to do that. I mean, I, I would be. You know, overjoyed if they would entertain the idea, and, you know, I'd, I'd jump right on board, and, and. You know, I can certainly help do fundraising and presentations, anything we could do to, to gather money so that we, so that we wouldn't have to spend prevailing wage dollars to fix the building up. Um, you know, I would encourage them to put a deed restriction on it that. You know, first writ of refusal if the society goes under, or if they want to, you know, divest of the building, that Hadley has first writ of refusal to take the building back. Um, you know, there are so many possibilities, but. Just like you said. If people, you know, people actually follow through and, you know, do the. You know, do that kind of thing is, you know, in this room, there's a few people out there, but.
Well, I don't know. Well, I don't know.
To just to just to do what the majority of the town wants.
Does the Historical Society? Speak to the Historical Commission?
Well, that's a, you know, that's a huge problem. Society, a lot of people are just, they're working against each other. You know, and when we. And when the town, when these buildings came up for question, you know, the new library and the new senior center. People voted overwhelmingly, you know, they knew what they wanted. And the town pushed back and the town, you know, the town hall pushed back, they didn't want to spend the money, nobody wants to see their taxes go up. But in fact. The town didn't mind if their taxes went up just so they could build these new buildings.
Well, there was great publicity at town meeting for the Senior Center. It showed pictures of what. What the Hooker Building was like, and it just, I think everybody voted for it that night or. A majority of people voted for it.
Yeah, well, I just can't see. That. You know, just because there's a few in town who would rather not.
Well, can tell. Or is it all right to hear about the select board meeting? Because I'd really like to hear about it.
Yeah, so um, we basically gave an update of what we've been working on. Um, and we received some pushback more, some more aggressive than others. Um, but folks were mostly concerned about putting money into a building where there's no plan. But the problem with that is. We need money to get a plan. Plan to get the money. Um, which Jane did say that we're sort of stuck in a.
We're stuck in a little circle, yeah, and it's.
And not getting support from. Town officials and such.
Well.
Which is silly, because one of those select board members was on the, you know, the Hadley Master Plan and his name is right on there and, you know.
Randy?
Yeah, and it's like, well, I mean. I would expect Randy to be working for town and working for what.
One of the ones that was in.
Well, he's concerned about, you know, having, you know. A not solid enough plan and. You know.
But we need to get that plan from someone. Probably a town official. Right?
What? A plan from the town official?
We need a plan for the building. From someone who can make that decision.
Well, the other way to go around, I mean, the 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 way we got the plan to update the Goodwin. After the town bought it back from the trustees. As we had our on-call consultant draw up some. Blueprints and actually put within the blueprints. Planning board room.
Right.
Park and Rec Room. TV five.
Historical Commission, I remember that.
Simple things, that's the plan. And you know, that's, you know, that's what I would encourage. Um, you know, if we could take these existing drawings that we have from D R A. And just put those, put those labels on there.
But who makes the decision? Who's gonna go in there?
Well, we can certainly. We could, we could do the same thing the Municipal Buildings Committee did and go and interview. Um, the the departments in town. And see who squeezed for space. Um, we did a space analysis to find out who needed more space, who was, you know, who's. You know, how many offices are ten feet from the center of Route nine? A bunch of them, you know, how how many windows?
What's the matter with that?
That's just really loud.
It's, you know, in a building that's even older than the Russell School, it's really loud in that building.
I know, I've been in there.
And I don't wish that for the future.
Well, I know parks and recs, um, but would other departments be willing to go in there?
I think they would, I think um, a a a couple of the people in town hall. When I asked them about the Russell Schools, oh, can I please have the bell tower, you know? Please give me the room that faces the the Polo Range so I can have that. You know, you know, people would enjoy that nice quiet, it's a very quiet building. You know, with all that brick. Much farther from Route nine and doors don't squeak, it's such a solid and strong, quiet building.
So you think that we should go around and talk to different people in the park and the. Town departments and see if they'd be interested in using.
We could create a little space analysis and.
But so my concern is I read through the Goodwin application. And they accounted for space for Parks and Rec Conservation Committee, Hadley Media and Town Storage, which I just learned today. So, um.
Media and Town Storage?
Town Storage, yeah.
Like what?
So, uh.
From the clerk department?
Uh, that I don't know that they specified, um, I think it's.
Okay, just town storage, okay.
But when I'm talking about Russell School, I say, you know, there are all these needs for. For the town, for offices, for storage and all these things, and I mentioned Parks and Rec. And so if there's already a plan, then what? What are we gonna say is gonna go on Russell School?
Well, I mean, you know, we could ask Park and Rec, would they rather be on the side on the side of Route nine where the playing fields are? Closer to Hopkins Academy. Or would they rather be in this building closer to the library? No, not necessarily any fields.
But then what's gonna happen with Goodwin?
Um, I'm sure. That the future of I.
It's a long way away.
Like I said, the last time we expanded town hall was a hundred and fourteen years ago. And just expanding to the Goodwin Building, I don't think, you know, and that's that's a great thing, but. I think expanding into that building is more appropriate. And the reason we.
Oh, it's so close to town hall, it's, I mean, they could walk back and forth if they needed to.
Yeah, it's easier to cross that road than it is to cross Route nine.
I guess I do wonder what departments may not be redundant.
Right. Well, I know that the, I know that Hopkins needs more space, maybe for admin space or something.
And those standards to bring it up to, you know, use for classroom would be a little different than.
Administration.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
So which, what did you say? Was it the library that was for Parks and Recs and?
Yeah, Conservation Committee.
Where in the heck are they gonna meet? Besides here?
In the Goodwin.
Oh, you said the Goodwin, not this building? Yeah, but that's a long way away. You know?
Well, they've already been approved. With CPA money. And the.
But it has, it's gone away though. The CPA says you have to work on it and have it finished in two years, which seems ridiculous to me.
But what you can get an extension for.
Yeah, I think they're going for the extension. I think it's on, it's it's an article on.
Not this one. And not that I know of.
But isn't the town working on RFQ right now for it?
That I saw the bid specs.
Uh, for Goodwin?
Yeah, I I actually gave it to you. So, I mean, they have, they, you know, the the it's it's meager, there's not much there, but there's enough for, you know, contractor knows what he's doing to give an accurate price. But it's not really a full set of bid specs. It's, you know, it there's enough, but. And Jennifer's concerned that it may come back and, you know, they won't be able to get accurate prices. Or the prices will be better. Uh, there there is a problem with, you know. Materials and supplies, the price, prices and availability are all over the place, so.
It's not appropriate for Parks and Recs, I'm sorry, the Goodwin Library.
Well, I would agree with you and I would leave that decision really up to Park and Rec commissioners.
And so where are they right now in town?
Right now, they're stuffed in a little office in town hall and their programs, I think, are spread throughout the town.
Say we're up there.
Which is always gonna be the case. They were up in North Hadley Hall, they were based there, but their programs were spread throughout the town. Um, I don't think that would change, but I think it's a better facility, it's a, you know, it's a bigger space. With all the playing fields, you know, out there that are being expanded. Um, we could be Park and Rec center of the planet around here. You say I do such a great job.
For handling.
Yeah, I haven't, I haven't been over this, Monday night pickleball, we always have our meeting on Monday nights and I never get to pick a ball, wanna go over to pick a ball.
Um, anything else about the select word?
Well, was there just one person that was really against it or?
That was really against it, yes.
Yeah, well, you know. Everybody has concerns, you know, and they're, you know, they're valid enough for us to take a close look at. So we shouldn't really ignore just because one person is dead.
I understand that, but safe for the library and for the um. Senior Center. How many, were there a lot of concerns for that too? Maybe this is just. Anxiety before the step.
Yeah, I mean, it could be. But, you know, again. You know, I. Just wanna, just wanna go forward with the project until there is no other way to go and. You know, the. If uh, if it's town hall or someone in town hall that keeps forcing us in circles. You know, I don't have control over that, but I'm gonna do what the townspeople are indicating they want to to the nth degree. Until something happens, because it's something, we can't just sit on it and wait. Or to, you know, it's it's disrespectful to the the rest of the surrounding towns to just let us sit there. You know, we have the means, we have the. We have the triple A plus bond rating, we have new buildings to work out of. We've got the money and CPA to do the stabilization efforts that we need to do. There's no reason to go backwards or let it stagnate. Now is the time and, you know, um. The the fact that that we have act active leaks in the roof and, you know, does it really make me angry? I have a licensed contractor in the state. And we're just over there and I can fix that roof in about twenty five minutes. And I could probably save it from a lot of interior damage in a very, very short amount of time.
It's a wizard.
Where does the water go right now? There's an attic.
Onto the floor. Lovely maple floors that don't squeak.
On the. Is there an attic?
Yeah, it comes in.
So it goes into the attic.
Goes into the attic, but it, you know, it keeps going back, gravity keeps pulling up.
On its, on the walls, into the wall.
No, it comes straight through, it'll find its way through the attic and lands on the second floor.
So you showed one picture that had a bunch of junk in the middle of one of the floor.
There's two, two rooms, the bell tower, there's a big section of gook on the floor. And in the center classroom, there's a bunch.
Yeah, I saw that.
And the second classroom is where they did excavation. Yeah, there's some water coming in there, it's not making damage yet. But if you leave it, it's gonna start to erode, it's gonna start to make damage. Um, it's a, it's a leak that was repaired several years ago with CPA money. And it it worked for a few years. But this was in, you know. Uh, efforts to save the building because we had planned to. All the O P Ms that worked on this building and that building. And the one in North Hadley Hall were doing so under the impression that we're gonna save that building, we're gonna put any money into it right away. So they knew we weren't gonna fix it up for town hall then, because we had to spend money on some good usable, safe structures for our current. People. You know, this building is for the future people, just like the people who built it. Built it for themselves.
Have we talked to the planning board? Does the planning board have any opinion on this?
Sure they do, but I, you know.
Do we need planning board?
I don't think so.
You don't think so? Because they all haven't, well, the the. The school in North Hadley, which is a community, so they had an opinion about that, they wanted to tear it down.
Well, that. That's what's our goal from getting their opinion. Is it going to change?
More support.
I'm not thinking we'll get what we're looking for.
I don't know.
So, all right, so we have until March twenty seventh to collect all this information to present to the CPA.
Well, what's the, I don't, what information do we have?
The heritage.
Yeah, so uh. Check in the town hall uh to determine who in town needs office admin storage.
Well, I can do that if you want.
Okay.
Who would appreciate more office or quieter, a quieter place to work than ten feet from.
Um, I think we should meet with Carolyn and Gary.
I do too, you know, I.
To get them comfortable.
Successful getting a hold of Gary.
You're not successful?
I have been unsuccessful. He was very accommodating for a bunch of. Uh, a bunch of the meetings and as of late, I haven't heard from him. I'm sure that he's getting frustrated with it and he really doesn't wanna talk to me. You know, from the beginning, I mean, he was one on the municipal building committee who voted for. The, you know, I have it right here in this book, that he voted to save the building to, you know. And I'm sure now he's just, he's jaded, finished, he's. Sick of listening to it, because he's worked for a bunch of years to to help this town and it seems like, you know, and I, you know, I look at the, at the annual town reports. You're not paying Gary half of what he deserves. Half of what his work.
Really?
You know, and I would be frustrated if I were him too, but you know, I I feel bad that he, you know, it, you know, he's no longer. Uh, you know, a champion for the, you know, that type of activity.
For the Russell School.
Yeah, I feel sad and, you know, because he's, you know. I remember Gary's dad from from Boy Scouts and, you know.
Well, he voted to, he voted to support the stabilization.
Yeah, but that was so many years ago.
Oh, well, what about the last meeting?
The last meetings, he's been like. Yeah.
So I know our goals were the getting the bid from the heritage.
Yep. Um, also keep the select word informed and comfortable with our decisions. Learn if the school has to adhere to stretch codes, which is in effect on uh July first of this year. Um, collect the most current assessment of the building, which I found on that website that you.
And what, what is it?
It was the one point three nine that we discussed. At the top of the meeting. Um, provide a list of other grant opportunities. Draft an RFQ for town hall to review, um, collect a letter of support from the Climate Change Committee, um, because. Uh, saving a building is more eco-friendly than demolishing it and building another one. Um, and Dan is joining that meeting on Thursday to hopefully get approval from them.
From.
Climate Change Committee.
Are you gonna send all this to me, please?
Yes. Um, so we just, we have to figure out what exactly, do we need to adjust the CPA application? Based on everything that's transpired in the past.
Yeah, uh, one of the things that Mary did mention is that the the uh. The the awarding authority would be town of Havering and, you know, she wants a specific. Uh, entity, be it, you know, uh, the select board or. You know, municipal building committee or whatever. You know, what we put on our application, you know, we're trying to be respectful of the people who are the actual stewards of the building. Uh, town administrator and town maintenance guy Gary Burr. Town administrator, she'll do whatever because she wants to do what the town wants. Gary's been as of late against the the building project, against the, you know, restoration.
He voted against it at your meeting?
Uh, he did.
Two weeks ago.
He voted against it, I mean, it's a full building committee meeting and, but mostly because there's no plan, he wants to see a plan. You know, he doesn't, you know, quote him again, I don't wanna see you put a roof on the thing and then the bell tower falls over.
Yep.
Um, and I respect that, you know, Gary's a smart guy, he knows that that, you know, that is a possibility if you do this wrong or if you don't have a continuing plan. But, you know, again, it's, you know, I take Mary's point because. You know, are we actually putting this, you know. This plan or awarding this money to people who don't wanna do the project? You know. I mean, Jesus. If we were in a holding pattern before, boy.
These are people who work for the town.
Sure, yeah. They can't.
We ask of them, correct?
It's true, but I would never ask someone to do something for, you know. Against their will, you know, I begrudgingly work for town. I mean, most of the people who work for town, you know, are frustrated already, and I don't wanna task them with something that they are wholeheartedly against. You know, to me, that doesn't make any sense, it doesn't help town. You know, I. I, you know, who, who?
The town meeting votes though, that's the, that's the bottom line.
Yeah, yeah, I think, you know, I think Gary would would, you know, would change his mind if he could, you know, if he actually did get a million and a half dollars to work on the building, boy, he'd be psyched. Would would it be a bummer because he has to pay prevailing wage and you don't get as much for your buck? Yeah, that's pretty frustrating. Uh, but at least he would know that the the project should be done right, like the senior center, they had an O P M there. Uh, Jane said, oh, I'd work with Colliers again, and, you know, I would too. They did a great job, they did screw up, well, they screwed up one or two things. Okay, but they made, they made good on it. Yeah, they fast that they said, this is what we did wrong, this is what we're gonna do, and this is what we did wrong over here, there's nothing we can do about it, and this is the avenue we're taking, now shut up. And that, you know, that's what we need.
Every builder has.
I don't wanna look this on, you know, the thing is, the the fact that this is this project, the money we're asking for is under a million and a half, we don't need to go for an O P M. And we could potentially dump this whole thing in Gary's lap.
No, we don't. We don't wanna do.
I, you know, he's got enough going and he he can't even do the building maintenance that he was hired to do. You know.
So maybe the town should hire somebody else to help.
They're in the process of looking for. Uh, they they wanna hire two people, but they're looking to hire at least one person.
This town is so short-staffed, it's unbelievable.
And I just wanna help, I know they're short-staffed, I'm I'm, I'm happy that I gave the last eight years of my life and we. You know, you, we built three new buildings with it, you know, that's great, I'm, you know.
Yeah.
But I think, you know, the town deserves more than that, they deserve for their historic structures to stand strong and uh.
Alright, you're gonna send all that to me, right?
Yeah, I just sent. Um.
Crappy.
So are we adjusting the application or are we just gonna collect all this information and hope for the best?
And unless.
I think we, either we just do one thing, the roof, or we go for the whole. Whole thing, that's my thinking.
So if we, if we go for the whole thing and we don't adjust the application, could they just say? I'm sorry, we can't do this, but we will do the roof for you?
No, because what they're looking for is. You know, like closer to bid-ready documents, they wanna know the scope of the work this need, needs to be performed. Um, so, in in fact, we have to uh put more effort into. Um, a more definitive scope of work. Um. You know, uh. Develop a plan to to remove the existing roof. Uh, use a certain type of product to replace it with, do it in a certain time span. Um. You know, lay out a plan and, you know, this type of stuff, we, you know, we can't do without that O P M. And you know, if we need an RFQ to go out, you know, identify somebody qualified to put this plan together. And then have them develop these bid specs so that we can put the project out to bid. And we're stuck in this holding pattern.
Yeah.
And we can't have it, it's, it, you know, the the, the project needs to be, make, you know, should we, should we separate? Into an application for, okay, we want a hundred thousand dollars for planning. And then we want the one point one million to do the work, we could do that.
Oh, that's an idea.
Um. Because it will, you know, a plan to do the roof and the uh retaining system and to to point the bricks. You know, just that plan alone is gonna be about a hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Um, to do it, you know, through a registered architect, you know, somebody who knows how to put this, these stuff together, architects aren't cheap.
Really not.
And I run out, so I do a lot of commercial work and that's the first thing that the business owners do not wanna spend money on an architect. Or a bunch of pictures, and as soon as they draw it wrong, it's another five thousand dollars to correct it.
Uh, so what are everyone's thoughts on that? Separating out the plan versus the stabilization funds.
Well, I think what Dan was just talking about was detailing the roof. And most every other.
I was like a for instance statement.
Yeah. But all of the, uh, each one of those things will have details to it.
Right. Yeah, so hi.
And I guess that's what people want. And will this Heritage Foundation do that?
Not true.
Not five hours.
Not five.
It was forty hours, wasn't it?
Four to five. Four to five. Yeah. That would've been nice.
No, that's true. Well, maybe if we just get them to concentrate on the roof.
The thing that the town, the 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 town's, town hall seems to be most concerned with is the procurement process. And what needs to happen. Um, they don't wanna, you know, they've been under the microscope for open meeting law and they're getting sued by different town people, blah blah blah, and they don't want any more trouble. So they don't wanna break any procurement laws and get stuck with some kind of lawsuit and you can't blame them. So as long as we go uh forward with this in the right order. So that they can feel comfortable that we're not gonna send them into a.
Yeah, yeah.
Endless pit.
So should this um Heritage Foundation, that should that be advertised? Doesn't seem to be, I think open meeting law means. The majority of one committee.
Right, yeah.
Or or educational.
That's something different, I think that that, you know, they'll give us their. Their uh opinion on the building and what it's gonna take to, I don't know how much of an actual, actual estimate they're gonna give.
Right, I don't know if there's gonna be a ballpark number.
Yeah, I think they can give us a general scope of what it's gonna take to put, you know, plans together. You know, how many hours they think it would take to put plans together and scope out materials lists and things like that.
Yeah.
Well, if the roof were done, we get money for the roof. At this town meeting, there is a town meeting in the fall. We could ask for another thing at that town meeting and then another thing at the next town.
I think the roof really needs to be.
Number one, yes.
Yeah, at least, at least repaired, like, again, I, you know, I can. It's just frustrating for me knowing that I can go repair that in a very short amount of time. And the the fact that we're jumping through these fiery hoops and not getting to that is really, really frustrating for a guy who knows how to do it. Um.
My, my general sense and feeling is that people are gonna want us to ask for what we need. For the building and then not ask for things for a long time about Russell.
Yeah, I agree, you know, and that's, that's one reason that I, I, you know. Alan and I sort of came up with a a short list of things that need to be done to stabilize it. And with that, is is, does that amount of money come up to the required uh status where you need an O P M? It doesn't, but it comes so close that I would actually, I I'd probably hire. Uh, a project manager to oversee whoever does the work, so that you could get that done and beyond that. Um, you know, then then once you spent this kind of CPA money on stabilizing that building and it becomes very visible in the, in the county. Um.
Yeah.
Your, your ability to capture grants.
Mm-hmm.
Opens up, people see that you wanna spend, and so, you know, fundraising availability goes through the roof, you know. Um.
The closer you are to completion.
My, my challenge is that if we just ask for the roof, people are gonna be like, we're in the same place that we were.
Yeah.
You're just fixing the roof.
Yeah.
The entire building's not stabilized, there's no plan.
Right.
For all the things.
Right.
Occupancy and we don't wanna invest that.
Right.
That, that's what I'm.
Yeah, and I wouldn't, I wouldn't, you know, that's not, that's not the, you know, where we wanna go, we wanna see use out of this building, we want. Plans to continue to to fix it up, I mean, it really does need, uh, you know. Proper accessibility. Um, to get into the building, to get out of the building, to to, you know, to use restroom facilities in the building. That's gonna cost a lot of money. Um. You know, I don't, I don't know, um, how much. Companies like Home Depot and Lowe's have donated to Park and Rec and different things, but I know that if we. If we get a fundraiser on that building. Boy, they'd like to have their name on sign, you know, project completed cooperating with Home Depot Materials, blah blah blah, huge fundraiser. Um, you know. And, you know, should, should we really ask? Um. The uh, the Historic Society if they're willing to at least handle uh incoming donations? Um.
And I can help with that.
Yeah, I mean, you know, we could start fundraisers, you know, between, between GoFundMe and. Uh, different ways of raising money, just to have them accept the money and keep it in an account. Keep it in escrow or whatever they need to do to hold it until we find a project or, you know, okay, we have enough money to do the bathrooms. It's gonna cost three hundred and fifty thousand dollars to build new restaurants and.
Really, that much?
Well, if you, you know, if you go prevailing wage, absolute, but I'm willing, you know. That's one of my specialties, I can do commercial bathrooms right last. You, you know, just like we have here at this building or the building next door, that's what I do for a living, you know, I'd be, I'd be happy to donate my time to put it together. You know, some company donates the materials, you get L K or one of these big plumbing suppliers donate stuff.
Library do it, they had a fundraiser.
Yeah, they're a five oh one C three, they, so they can, they can do fundraisers, they had the big thermometer out front of town hall.
And we're not, um, this building committee, I guess, is not a five oh one C three.
Yeah, we could create.
Nonprofit, isn't it?
There's a lot of paperwork to create that.
Oh, I see. Well, the Historical Society might be.
They are. And I, I did look at their articles of organization and they are qualified to handle the money. So, I mean, it's, it's up to them though, they're.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I understand if they don't wanna take it on, but I'm also happy to.
Yeah.
Do.
Alan's a member there.
Alan's a member there, we could. You know, the, I I don't think they're, um, they they would be opposed. Uh, but are they willing and able, that's a different story.
Um, I mean, I certainly think that fundraising within a community would be great. Um, we're not gonna raise sixteen million dollars that way, we might raise a few hundred thousand, um.
Grand B Historic Society raised over a million for their buildings.
Yeah, but that's one million. We need sixteen.
Well, then to make it for, we're, we're just asking right now, one million.
But we need a plan for the.
You need a plan. Again, a bunch of those. A bunch of that sixteen million dollars, again, and I'll say it again. Was the, the reason they came to those numbers, because every one of those projects was separated out. And the soft cost involved with replacing the doorknobs. Was separated, there are soft costs and architectural drawings required in replacing every element of that building.
Was a separate.
Was a separate thing, railings, steps. You know, another set of steps, all of that stuff was separated and to, you know, uh, to different.
So what, what do you think the, the cost would be?
More toward what the old Mohawk, you know, came up with, you know, more about, you know, six million.
Much more feasible, um, so I did put together that list of grants, I don't know if anyone had a chance to look at it. Um, but there's like a dozen grants on there, um, and some of them are smaller, some of them are, you know. Hundred thousand dollars, fifty thousand dollars, but some of them are up to seven hundred fifty thousand. Um, and they all have, you know, there's their, um, uh. Specific categories that they want to focus on, um. Uh, I think if we end up doing a community center or Parks and Rec Center or something. Like that will have many more opportunities for funding, um. People don't necessarily wanna fund admin offices.
Mm-hmm.
Um, a lot of these are community building, um. Uh, foundations and.
I don't think I got it, when did you send that up?
Uh, two weeks ago, three weeks ago?
I'll look.
Yeah, see, the reason all this is so much is they separated, this D R E report. Elevator one point one million, accessible restrooms three hundred ninety seven thousand, and accessible six nineteen thousand dollars. Uh, step handrails sixteen thousand dollars, interior stairs thirty seven thousand dollars. Replace knob set seventy four thousand dollars.
Knobs.
Uh, repair, repay, repay parking lots sixty one thousand dollars. Sidewalks seventy four thousand dollars, unstable grays one hundred and ninety four thousand dollars. Uh, trim and columns forty nine thousand dollars.
We got the gist.
It's, all this stuff is separated out and each one has its soft costs of. You know, the brickwork, just the soft cost alone to to do the brickwork is thirty nine thousand dollars, with the total cost of the brickwork was a hundred and seventy two thousand dollars. Uh, the roof came out to three hundred and forty eight thousand dollars, which the soft cost was eighty. Now, all of that stuff was separated out to 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 show what it could potentially cost.
Sure.
Which comes up to, yeah, sixteen million dollars.
Right.
If you do every one of those jobs every other year, it could be a fortune, but that's not what we're looking to do here.
Yeah. Um. So I think if we move forward with any of the grants that are listed here or any that we come up with, um, that aren't on this list, um. I don't know who's gonna do all the grants because the grants, uh, you know, obviously take a lot of time.
Yeah.
Um, my background is actually fundraising, but I uh have never written a grant before. Um, so that is definitely not my specialty.
I have too.
Yeah.
Hate to say.
Okay. Okay. So, alright, so what are we doing with CPA, are we separating out the hundred K or so?
I think maybe we should, um, you know, we'll, we'll make a, a, an email to Mary and ask her if that would be a good idea.
Sure.
And if she's amenable to that, or, and we should also ask, um. We should get together with Gary and uh. And Carolyn.
Well, I bet you two were doing that on Thursday.
Yeah, and we'll, yeah, we could.
But, yeah, about something else though, not specifically about this, maybe she could, maybe Carolyn can stay after. We could tell.
Yeah, we should definitely quiz them and ask them if that would be a more palatable approach. Is to have it separated and to do different, because in fact, you know, they're.
CPA usually likes that.
Yeah, in fact, their, their point is. If we spent a bunch of money on the, on the design work for the repairs that we're asking.
Yeah.
And the, and those estimates come out to be super astronomical because of product availability or something.
Yeah.
Well, that makes it unpalatable and unrealistic, and that's what they wanna see, they wanna see that the, you know. The numbers haven't gone through the roof over the past six years because of COVID and different supply chain problems. Uh, in fact, when, when you look at the actual laws. Um. The designer, I read this today. Now, just when, cost estimate requirement. Uh, may be advertised at the winning authority, cost estimate is greater than one year old. Thus, before advertising contracts for design services, subject to the designer selection law. Construction services subject to Massachusetts General Law one forty nine. Um, or any energy management services. You will need to have obtained or prepared a project cost estimate within the past year, so that's what they're looking for. They wanna see updated numbers. And it's, those are simple things to get.
Yeah.
But if they're not allowing us the money to do it.
Right.
We can't do it, and what we've done is.
They include it in our.
Right, we included it in the one application, so they're, they're like, and with, and without the acknowledgement that, yes, well. The money all goes back if we don't use it, and that's.
Yes, that's right.
If you look at the CPA.
That's exactly right.
A lot of times, you know, we, we applied for CPA money of seventy four thousand dollars and seventy three of it came back. The project never went through, you know, the planning indicated that, you know, it's not gonna work. And they're not acknowledging that fact, they're, they wanna see that the project's gonna forward. And it's not gonna come back and they wanna spend all the money and do it right, and you know, I respect that, that's, you know, that means, that's the, that's where they wanna go, that's great. So, yeah, I think we should definitely, we'll ask Mary, we'll ask Gary and Carolyn.
Okay, that sounds.
If we, if it's a good idea to separate that out.
And then you and I can talk, talk offline.
Yeah, and we'll, we'll.
Updating the application.
Yeah, we'll update the application, send it out through email.
Open meeting law.
Well, if this, if there's only two of us.
Talking about it, right.
It's not quorum.
Yeah, we're talking about it.
Okay. I can't talk about the plan to happen offline?
As long as, it can't be a quorum.
Oh, no.
If two of us or one of us works on something, we can, you know, we can do that all day long, but if we start inviting everybody into the conversation. You know, uh, publicizing that we're actually meeting, if it's against the law, so.
Well, Dan, you. Uh, warned care, uh, Courtney and me at the beginning of this process about.
Well, I saw, I saw it happening in town and I didn't want, you know, I don't wanna get us stuck there. And it's like, well, you know, we just have to do what we have to do and so be it.
And it can be information sharing, but no deliveries.
Exactly, exactly.
I think Amos was much more strict then.
Which uh brings us to the other. So. Item on the agenda, which is the, the conflict of interest training, everybody get that done.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
The deadline was in our second.
I'm all done with it.
Thank you.
I couldn't get in and so the clerk showed me how to do it.
Is that a no?
I've done it many times in the past.
And then Carolyn, you did it?
No, I couldn't get in and so the clerk showed me how to get in, so I got in, but I hadn't finished it. That was today.
Okay, great.
But I have to have minor surgery tomorrow, so I've gotta go home in a minute.
Okay, no problem, um. Any new business?
New business?
Yeah, I wanted to check in about, um, are folks familiar with city space in East Hampton?
Daily.
So it's, um, the old town hall or city hall rather, that they built in, uh, they, um. Fixed up to be like a, a maker space, yeah, so they have art on display, they have somebody with, um. Right, uh, they have a framing store.
Yeah, we go there.
They rent out this. Oh, you do?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, yeah, so it's a really beautiful space and they're in the process of, uh. Okay, yeah, yeah. So it's a really beautiful space and they're in the process of, of fundraising as well. So I got a tour, um, last week. It's a beautiful, beautiful space, so it got me excited about, you know, all these opportunities that we can have with Russell School. But they lease it from the town. The town doesn't have to deal with, um, fixing anything up. Um, because the, the nonprofit maintains the structure, so just wanted to throw that out there.
Yeah, and that's, you know, that's the other thing, the town could probably lease the Russell School to the Hadley Historic Society. With the stipulation in the lease that the Historic Society is responsible for every and all repair. And then, then if we avoid prevailing wage.
Right.
You know, which would be great and they can lease it for a limited amount of time, ten years, fifteen years or whatever. Give them just enough time to fix up the building. Um, you know, those are possibilities that just.
Yeah.
You know, for one reason or another, you know, if there's, if the commission or the, the society doesn't get along with town. You know, I know that was quite a while ago. Maybe things have changed, you know, maybe. Maybe it's, it's healing now and we can get on with it instead of fighting. There's too much division.
Yeah.
The one thing I did bring up, um, I should mention, I, um, asked. Town administrator, um, and Gary through email. If there was any way that we could get a bunch of volunteers together, couple of builders, me, maybe building inspector, Gary. Fired, we, a few builders together and build a temporary access ramp so that people could safely get into the building and view it. Before town meeting. You know, we could, we could escort tours.
That's a good idea.
I'd be happy, and Gary came back right away and said, we don't have that kind of insurance. So due to lack of insurance, we can't do that. Is there a way around that? Is there a way to get an insurance rider? Can we, is there a way to, to boost our insurance for a limited time? So that we can build a temporary access ramp so that people can get into the building safely without, uh, having the issue of liability. And they can view and see for themselves how strong this building is and how beautiful the views are from inside the building.
Can you ask Carolyn that too in your little meeting?
Yeah, I'll, I'll approach it again. I just, it's, to me, it's, you know, I see the, when you, when you go on the Hadley Media. And the meetings open up just before meetings that have a view from Russell School, like those little red houses. And I've been helping, I've been fixing up those little red houses for the property owner over there. And it's just to me so ironic how.
What are you talking about? The Russell School? Or the one in North Rivers?
No, the, there's a view from Russell School, shooting down across the way toward those little red houses that are on the corner of Golf Street.
Oh.
And I've been working for the, for the owner of those, that property, fixing up those houses.
Oh.
And it's that those houses are older than Russell School. By the same, by about fifty years. They're older than Russell School and then the view is amazing, you know. If, if you ever go into that building and you look at. This view of center of town.
Yeah.
That's, it'd be such a waste. And again, you know, I, I hope that climate change committee agrees. It's just, it's just gonna cost way less to put a roof on the building than it is to build a new building and then put a roof on it.
Definitely.
Way less carbon footprint.
I think OPM's a great.
I think so.
So who's gonna talk to them?
I'll go to that meeting. I approached, uh. Uh, Jack, uh, before his meeting, uh, a couple of weeks back. They were very busy that day and I didn't wanna go into the meeting because I was not on the agenda. But now we are on the agenda, so.
Also, in terms of accessibility, there are grant opportunities to, uh, uh, add.
I noticed that, yes.
Yes. To add accessible things to, like elevators and stuff.
Elevators, yeah, you can get grants. And if you, again, if you put CPA money into the building, those grant opportunities open up.
Yeah. Yep.
And, you know, all the people worried about spending too much money on the building. Well, guess what? Just grants for that.
Yeah. Uh, just scheduling the next meeting. Um, so should we do maybe the first week in April? After the CPA meeting? That would be. April third, Monday.
Okay.
Yeah. That works.
Five thirty again, of course, we'll have daylight savings time then. Okay.
Okay, motion to adjourn.
Hi.
Hi, thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone.